All right, can I have a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes of August 26?
Motion, Mike.
Second, Megan. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions. Can I have a motion to approve the August monthly reports?
So moved, Ross.
Megan, second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions. Is there anything from the public that is not currently on the agenda? To be brought up? Corey, you're looking pretty dark there.
Where is he?
He's lurking in the shadows. He is lurking in the shadows. There he is. All right, I have a couple of comments. So there's been a number of requests for a townwide garage sale that we did not host in June. So with everyone's approval, we would like to have September 26th, it's a Saturday, as the townwide yard sale. It's actually the same day as Lebanon Boroughs, so it could help.
What was the date again?
September 26th.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine. As always. Anyone opposed to that?
No, will we still offer the tables at the municipal building like we've done in the past?
We never got to that point.
Yeah, what?
We didn't get to that point. Okay, just asking.
No, I think we're just gonna stick to everyone doing it in their driveway if other people, if they want to share in other driveways, that's probably our best bet, rather than setting them up at the municipal building. I do want to thank Nancy and Dale Garlic. The other day, as I was running, I happened to, I ran past the park and I saw a couple out there doing some groundskeeping, and obviously they weren't our staff. So on my way, my loop back around, I stopped to talk to them. So they are residents over on Rachel Court, who bring their grandkids to the park and just enjoy doing the yard work. So they were more than happy to be cleaning up the weeds and raking the sand. And I volunteered them for the park, the park committee. They didn't say no, so I'm gonna take that as a yes. But, you know, just a thank you to them because they did it on their own time and they've been doing it for a couple of days now. The Hundreden County Strong Community Challenge, or Hundreden Strong Community Challenge, which is with the Hundreden Healthcare System. So for those that may be, may or may not be aware, they usually do an annual gala, which obviously we're not doing a gala, they're not doing the gala this year. So they are doing a telethon. They are looking to get someone somewhat famous to host the telethon. They partnered with 11 other not-for-profits in the county. And they'll be raising money and the money will be distributed evenly amongst all of the not-for-profits, including Hundreden Healthcare. They have done a challenge, and you know how much I love a challenge, everyone. So the town that raises the most from residents, and this is, you know, people who can do a $5 donation, or this isn't any, you know, we're not, they're not looking for huge dollar amounts from people. But every little bit obviously helps the town, different categories, but the town school will receive a $2,500 grant. So we'll share, Megan, if you could share with the school board and see if we can, you know, compete against a few other towns and really show them Clinton spirit. So as you all know, the league is going to be virtual this year. At the business meeting, I would be sworn in as president for the 2021 year. I will have a virtual swear, I don't know, I'll have a virtual swearing in the day of the business meeting, and then we're going to arrange to have a ceremonial swearing in town, probably late November, early December. So stay tuned, we'll get more information on that and figure out kind of next steps from there. And then, as you all received today, a proclamation for John and Kathy Madden. So I don't believe they are on the phone, and I know that Seal will deliver the proclamation tomorrow, but I do want to read it for the record. Whereas John and Kathy Madden have been residents of the Town of Clinton for well over four years, and whereas John's extensive detailed background, wealth of knowledge of the Town of Clinton and the history of properties made him an essential asset to the Environmental Commission, and whereas Kathy's love and vision of planning had a plan to turn the Town of Clinton into a butterfly habitat to be enjoyed by residents and visitors alike, conduct bird and butterfly accounts for the Audubon Society and the New Jersey Butterfly Association, and whereas through John and Kathy's determination and excitement, formed the Clinton Conservancy Gardens along with the Clinton Green Team, submitted a grant application that was awarded a $10,000 sustainability grant, and whereas groups joined the mission to clear land, dig, spread mulch, and plant 46 different species of trees, shrubs, and perennials, 498 plants in all, plus countless perennial seed and over 2,000 bulbs. And whereas a special thank you to the Girl Scout troop led by Kim Rogan, Boy Scout troop 120, 121, led by Mr. Smith, and the Eagle Project of Zach Kovach, the Sierra Club, Denise Birmingham, for the hours spent transforming a protruding manhole into a work of art at the Water Street location, Councilwoman Betsa Sidka, and many other Clintonians for their endless hours of assisting. Whereas John and Kathy Madden will be remembered in the Town of Clinton for their dedication, friendship, and for the beautiful gardens that will thrive for years to come and to be enjoyed by so many. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the Town of Clinton. Do hereby extend our heartfelt appreciation and sincere thanks to John and Kathy Madden for their valuable service and dedication to the citizens in our community, and wish them all the best in their future endeavors as they have decided to leave the Town of Clinton, presented on this ninth day of September. So Seal will deliver, she's got it, she's got it there. She will deliver it to them, and obviously, you know, we all have wonderful stories of working with John and Kathy in some way, shape, or form, and all of their efforts for the town. So with that, we do say thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was all I had on my list of things. Next is the public hearing of ordinance 20-18, and this is the water reservation process. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
That's Riley, I'll move that. Megan, second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Is there any comments on the ordinance which is amending the water reservation process? Going once? Going twice?
I have a question.
What's that?
Walter Wilson have a question.
Sure. Where are you? Oh, there you are.
I need your address, Will. Sorry?
Your address.
I live in Clinton Township, but I am the owner of, the manager of the company that owns the Global Ag Property at 19 West Main Street, and also the Wargo, former Wargo property at 2 West Main Street. Although, that number is in question oftentimes. On page... Six of the ordinance, just curious as to the date that will be inserted there? Or is there a date that?
That'll be the date that the ordinance is passed, which will seemingly be tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure thing. Anyone else? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Megan, moved. Oh, Megan, second. Mike and I are challenging each other.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 20-18?
Riley, I'll move.
Cherry, second.
All right, roll call, please. Demine?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Ieck?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Trapp-Hagan?
Yes.
Eric Kovach? Yes. All right. The next is the introduction of ordinance 20-19, and this is the property maintenance standards recommended by the Environmental Commission. Can I have a motion to introduce?
Mike.
Got a second?
He says second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Seal, the public hearing will be?
Yeah, I just thought of that. I never looked.
I know, me too.
Let's see, October, what, first?
First meeting in October will be the 14th.
Very good, thank you.
Public hearing for that will be October 14th. All right. Next is Resolution 129-20, and this is a shared service agreement between Hampton and the Town of Clinton. As you may remember, Hampton reached out to us to ask if the chief would assist with the crossing guard. So we are entering into this shared service agreement so that the chief will be overseeing their crossing guards, and Hampton will be paying the Town of Clinton. So can I have a motion to adopt 129-20?
This is Megan, moved.
Mike, second.
All right, roll call? Yes. Ms. Demine?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Ieck?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kovach?
Yes.
Mr. Trapp-Hagan?
Yes.
Eric Kovach? Yes. Next is Resolution 130-20, and this is the Clinton House liquor license renewal. Can I have a motion?
So moved, Ross.
Seconded, Lisa.
Is this a roll call, Seal?
No, it's fine.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Next is Resolution 131-20. So we received a, an email from, sorry, trying to get my computer to work, from Stacy Becker, who's the Assistant Mental Health Administrator and A&amp;D Director, about making Clinton a stigma-free community. And I believe Stacy is on the call, as well as Susan Nicola, who is the Division Head for Social Work Services, and Megan O'Reilly, who is the Administrator of the Department of Human Services. And I just want to run through this real quick. It is a resolution and you all have it, but I think it's important that we actually read through it, so please bear with me. Whereas the Hundreden County Board of Chosen Freeholders, along with the Hundreden County Department of Human Services, supports the designation of stigma-free communities in every municipality, and whereas at their May 5th, 2015 meeting, the Hundreden County Board of Chosen Freeholders unanimously passed a resolution supporting the designation of Hundreden County as a stigma-free community, and whereas Hundreden County recognizes that one in four Americans has experienced mental illness, including substance use disorders, in a given year, according to the National Institute of Mental Health. Whereas mental health problems are more common than cancer and heart disease combined, affecting children and adults, including more than half of our Iraq and Afghanistan veterans treated at Veterans Administration hospitals. And whereas, given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions who need help. Whereas the stigma associated with the disease of mental illness is identified as the primary reason individuals fail to seek the help they need to recover from the disease. And whereas stigma-free communities aim to inspire public interest and open dialogues about stigma, raise awareness of the disease of mental illness, and create a culture wherein residents who have the disease of mental illness feel supported by their community and neighbors, and feel free to seek treatment for the disease without fear of stigma. And whereas promoting awareness that there can be no health without mental health will break down barriers and encourage residents of all ages to be mindful of their mental health and ask for help when needed. And whereas local resources are available to treat the disease of mental illness so that, so no one resident needs to suffer alone or feel hopeless. Whereas establishing a stigma-free community will raise awareness of resources and encourage residents to engage in care as soon as the need is identified, so recovery can begin, hope is inspired, and tragedies are avoided. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Clinton recognizes the community needs and supports the efforts of the County of Hundreden, designating the Town of Clinton as a stigma-free community. Before we just vote on this, I'll give Megan, Councilwoman Johnson, a few minutes, too.
I want to thank Megan and Stacy for putting this forward to the freeholders. I'm, Megan and Stacy and I work together, together in the community as an executive director for Substance Abuse Agency, Mental Health Agency, and I've worked in the field for almost 20 years. I can explain how much tragedy I've seen with people who suffer with substance abuse and mental health illness, with families and the network of friends and family that are so effective. And if us as a community are open and willing to support each other, we will have less tragedies and more people will come forward to speak about what they're struggling with. Things with substance abuse and mental health is that it's not, it doesn't have all those outward signs that you see when you have a sickness and you go to your general practitioner, or you have cancer or something, and people suffer a lot alone, you know, inside, and it's hard for them to come forward. And I, I love this idea of having a stigma-free community. And, you know, if there is anybody within the community that is struggling, please, you know, here even as, you know, your council, mayor and council, we're here to support you and direct you in the right direction in order to get the help that you need. And so I am, I would love to be the person to say that, Megan Johnson, I move this.
Okay, can I have a second?
Lisa, second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, there's a toolkit that I will forward out to everyone, too, so that you can use it for some social media and share stuff out. And yes, thank you to them for bringing it forward to us. So next is Resolution 132-20, and this is the extension of outside dining. We had initially talked about this as a, through the summer, but giving restaurants the opportunity to continue outdoor dining for those that don't have their own patios through November, that is what this resolution is for. So anybody have any questions? If not, can I have a motion?
Riley, I'll move.
Cherry, second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, good. Next is the special event request for the run-of-the-mill. I can't believe we're talking about the run-of-the-mill already. I'm so excited that we're, that it's coming back.
Hopefully.
What's that?
Hopefully.
Okay. Is there any questions? Obviously, the chief, you've gone through this multiple times. It's, it's the same thing, nothing has changed?
No, Mayor, it's basically the same package as they submit every year, so it's about the same thing we have every year.
Okay.
I do remember that we had, we did have some issues at the end of the race last year. We just briefly talked about how, I think it was a while to clear up the, about Main Street, and is there anything that we can do to sort of wrap that up?
To clear what part up?
Main Street. I remember talking with some of the business owners on Main Street after the fact, and I think they were experiencing, it may have been just that they were frustrated because there was the parade, and then there's also the race, and, you know, it's the spring, and several events downtown that closed the Main Street.
Lisa, if I can just jump in for a second?
Yeah, sure.
They started late last time, and if I recall correctly from our last conversation, that's what happened.
So is it a late start, or is this an earlier start?
I mean, they, the time was what it was, but they actually just started late.
Right. And I think what they, the restaurants, or what Dino asked for was that we allow cars to be parked. We just close it when the race is coming through, so that anyone that's parked there is stuck there until after everyone comes through for the race.
Yeah.
And we've changed that in the, in the permit for this year, that people can park there? It wouldn't be in the permit?
It wouldn't be in the permit, it would just be in?
How, clearing out how? Yeah, just wanted to verify.
Yeah. Sorry to have interrupted you, I just.
No, I know.
I was talking, it triggered my memory of that conversation, and it was.
It's over a year and a half ago, so I, I just remembered that there were some complaints, and I'm, and thank you for that.
That was a good point.
Yeah. All right, can I have a motion?
I'll move it. Megan, second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? And I see Susan and Stacy just got on, and I apologize, guys, but we've already done your resolution, but we did give you guys a shout-out, so, and then you can get a copy of the resolution from our clerk, Mrs. Covino. She can send you a finalized version of it. All right. Next is the special event request form for the first responders event on September 19th. And, uh... Obviously, the chief's already been through this, and Mr. Iazetta is on the call, if anyone's got any questions. His name is Mary on the phone, on the, on the Zoom.
Is this, I have a question. Is this in, tied to 9/11, or is this tied as a remembrance and honoring first responders?
You're muted. You're muted. There's a little microphone down the bottom of the screen. Nope.
You can also hit the spacebar.
Yeah, on the lower left-hand corner, there's a little microphone, and you'll probably have a red X on it if you just click it.
This is like my son's Zoom meetings.
Right, Mike is host, can you unmute him, or no?
No, now they only ask to unmute, not to actually.
You can, you can ask him to start his microphone.
What's?
If you go on his bubbles, you should be able to do that. Not working?
No, the settings on this don't allow for us to actually unmute somebody, just to mute them.
Yeah, I know, but on the, on the three bubbles, it should.
It doesn't show up there anymore, Megan. That was before some of their changes.
All right, we'll give it a second. If not, we can come back to it and do the other business. And Carmen can let, if we can't get Carmen on, Carmen can let the chief know, and then the chief can let all of us know what's going on. So, we have no correspondence, Seal?
No.
All right.
Okay, now I'm on.
All right, there you go.
Hi there.
I was just gonna try to, okay.
Hello.
All right, here I am. Okay, so, what it is, is that I just want to do something for the town. I want to try to get all the townspeople here to recognize our police department, our fire department, our rescue squad. So it's basically, I'm trying to focus it on the Town of Clinton. I might reach out to some of the smaller towns around us to see if they'd like to just come and join us on this. That's really what it's really all about, just so we can recognize them, what they do for us in Clinton.
Understood. So this is not tied to 9/11 at all?
No, no.
Just a general thank you?
Yes.
Gotcha. Anyone else have other questions?
It's four hours long.
How, how long?
Hours of the event, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM?
No, it starts at 3:00, and no likelihood, so it'll probably be over by 4:35, something like that. Not four hours. I don't think it's gonna be four hours.
I don't think Dr. D is playing for four hours.
He promised, but give me four hours, but I just said, I don't think it's gonna be that long, Dan.
So it's just like food, DJ?
Right.
Speaker, like will someone?
Yes, yes, I want the chief to speak, the fire, the fire chief, the, everybody that's the head of their departments. Give a little speech to the people of Clinton, and then we, as the people that we show up, the people that show up will show their gratitude for what they do for us. And I think it'd be nice for us to do something like that, in light of everything that's going on in the world right now.
Yeah, sounds great.
Anyone else have any other questions?
And there's no, no other, there's no like bounce houses, or like anything we would need insurance?
Well, something you brought that up. Is there any way that you can open up the restrooms in town?
No, we can't.
Where the park is. Then let me ask you a question. Why are they there then?
Well, normally we could, but because of COVID, we've, we've made the decision to keep everything closed because of the requirements around cleaning and maintaining. It's more than, it becomes an insurance liability for us.
All right, got it.
That's the reason why. Hopefully, at some point in time, we get to a better place where we can open things. But that's even why our municipal building is closed to anyone coming in.
All right, makes sense, okay.
So everyone's just on their own? There's no portage on, there's no option, you're just, you show up?
Yeah, I didn't, didn't, that never crossed my mind at this moment, because I figured the bantams would be open.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of ones out there.
For an hour and a half, I can't imagine it's.
Right.
Fine, right?
All right. Anyone else have questions? Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved, Ross. Mike, second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. We did the correspondence, all right, reports. All right, so Carmen, thank you very much. You can hang with us if you want.
Thank you so much, I'm listening.
All right. All right, Chief?
Eric, I don't have a lot to report, other than we're working on a couple of crossing guards, but I did have one of my backup guards decide to return to full duty, so that's gonna fill our spot over at Union 173. And that'll be a secondary post for now, but we'll keep it as full until I can get some additional backup guards up and trained.
Okay.
So that's in the works.
Sounds good. Rich?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Kathy?
Nothing to report.
Seal?
The only thing I want to say is that we're gonna put on the website about voting.
Yep.
It's a big issue this year, okay? So there's the website at the Hundreden County Clerk's office, and she has a little video explains it very, it's so clear, and step by step. They're gonna be putting another Dropbox up at the library soon, I don't know when, but all ballots are supposed to be mailed out by October 5th. So deadline to register to vote is October 13th. And spread the word, check the website, we're gonna put it on the website tomorrow. The clerk's website, the county clerk's.
Okay.
Should answer all the questions.
Can we have that, can we put that on ours as well? Is it on?
We're going to, yeah, that's our website. We're gonna put the county clerk's.
A link to it.
On ours, yeah, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Tara?
The only thing I have is for next meeting, look out for, we're gonna have the redevelopment, Redevelopers Agreement for Ingerman, for the Ingerman Project, which is the A&amp;P redevelopment site. And I'm hoping that we will also be able to have a discussion at that meeting about a pilot agreement for that site, and the possibility of the town hiring an expert to evaluate the financial benefits, detriments of having such a pilot, so as to provide counsel about where to go on that. So those will be the next steps we're taking with that project.
Sounds good. Anything else? No?
I think that's it.
All right. Lisa?
Yes, hello, Mayor. I am, I have a few things, well, actually just two things to report. Number one, I wanted to check on the status of the community center as of buildings and grounds, because we have some more requests coming in for use of the building since the governor allowed indoor exercise 25% capacity. But I understand that we probably have some concerns about cleaning regulations. So I want to find out what our stance is on that, so that I can get back to recreation and to the parties that are interested in renting the facility.
So B&amp;G met on Tuesday, and the decision was that we would continue to keep the community center closed. You know, at least potentially through the end of the year, having it coincide with the municipal building and the state of emergency. But to your point, it really is, it's not, we don't have the ability to manage the cleaning that would be required, and the cost to an individual to rent the facility and then have to do the cleaning between classes, I think, becomes unmanageable. So at this point in time.
So I'm also assuming, and just so that I'm not speaking out of turn, when I talk to the the exercise instructors who are inquiring, you know, they had offered to help clean, but I'm assuming that we need to have that really regulated. That's not just the pitch-in, help-out, you know?
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's not. I mean, I think we just don't have enough information. So unless anyone is opposed, I would entertain a motion to, at this point in time, keep the community center closed. keep the community center closed possibly through the end of the year, but we could reevaluate as things change.
Okay, thank you, I'll make sure that they know. Um, the only other thing I have really is just for um, council, uh, back several months ago, we decided to start a diversity and inclusion committee, um, I was very excited about that and checked in with the mayor just to see if I could take the reins on making some phone calls um, to find out, you know, how best to go about setting up that committee. I know that we have two reverends in town who are putting forth a lot of effort to get that up and running, but I thought, you know, some extra help wouldn't hurt, so I'm speaking on Friday with Leon Andrews, who's the Director of Race Equity and Leadership with the National League of Cities, just to get some good, you know, feedback from him as to um, best practices and things that we should keep in mind when we are creating this committee, um, and how to give it some teeth, so that it does some real work to um, make our community as welcoming and hospitable and equitable as possible. So um, that'll be three thirty at uh, on Friday, so if anybody on council or in town for that matter has anything that they would like me to inquire about, any specific points, anything they'd like me to raise, um, questions that they have, let me know, email me, text me, I'm happy to include your thoughts in that conversation and I'll report back.
All right, can I have a motion to keep the community center closed?
So moved.
Megan, second. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, abstentions, all right. Uh, Ross?
Yes, uh, Rescue Squad met last night, uh, for the month of August, they had three hundred and forty-nine calls and they also recruited recently uh, ten new members. Uh, Shatree Commission met this past week, we had to do a bit of a switcheroo with our meeting days due to a scheduling conflict. Um, and one of the things that we discussed um, was the lanternfly issue after a conversation between the mayor and myself. Um, I am working with Shatree Commission to begin to compile a list of key areas in town where we see uh, infestations uh, of the lanternflies. And we're gonna go through, kind of divvy it up as a group and we'll kind of walk through different sections of town, compile those and then use that information to hopefully work with the Department of Agriculture to get them to assist in spraying trees uh, in town to try and get rid of them uh, to the best extent possible. So if there are any residents who have any concerns in their own properties, feel free to shoot me an email uh, and reach out and we can kind of put that all together.
Looks like you got two council members.
I see hands, yes.
Take Megan first.
Um, how? Up here in the Knowles, I don't know if it's because we back Spruce Run, but they're, they're every, I mean, they're everywhere, it's, and then um, why can't I remember the name of the tree?
Tree of Heaven.
The Tree of Heaven, are we, is there a plan to eliminate some of those trees? We have one on our property, so we're looking to get rid of it, um, but there are, there are tons like uh, on the back of Spruce Run, which then backs this neighborhood, so they're just, um, Riley got one off my back the other day because it landed on my back, so I mean, they're just, and they're just everywhere, so um, I don't, like, so, and, and how, like, the Department of Agriculture, which my husband and I, my husband has a degree um, in agriculture, so we've contacted the Department of Agriculture as well as Rutgers and have not gotten that response, uh, it kind of goes to dead air. So how are we kind of combating that issue and then how are we, if we don't get a response, how, um, cause I know we're not the only community, how are we looking at it as a town um, in order to kind of resolve the issue?
So uh, to answer the question, the reason they're not responding to anyone in Hunterdon is because we're a quarantined county. So they know that we have the issue already, um, they didn't quite make a clear statement about that. Rich did put some additional information out and he and I were on a call with um, Secretary Fisher. So, a- and also with the person in his department who kind of is in charge of all of it. Um, they're, they're, obviously their resources are limited like everyone else's resources, you know, they, they're dealing with the, the COVID, they're dealing with furloughs, um, but if we can get them kind of a, a, a group of things, private property, they're kind of so-so on, but you know, if we let them know with some of our, our public lands, I know over at uh, Dematte Pond is pretty bad, Huntsville Park is, is unbelievable, uh, they brought down one tree at one point in time, so we're gonna hope that they're able to, you know, spend some time and do some stuff for us. But it's one of those things where it, it, limited, limited resources and spread beyond then.
Yep, and that's kind of the, the thought process, is at least if we can list where we have them on public lands and then include information about, you know, private residences where possible, at least if we can all that information together and try and push that forward to kind of make a point to an extent.
Right, and the other thing, so with those trees, if you ha- if you wind up taking that tree down at all, it is an invasive species, so you have to kill the roots.
Yeah, good thing my hus- good thing my husband has a degree in that, so we were already um, doing all kinds of stuff on that, so. Do they, Ross, do you know if, once those trees are eliminated, do they just move on to another tree that is not a tree of heaven, I have like, I've been removing Tree of Heaven from my property for fifteen years since I moved in, we got down to our last five and they are all over it. Not only are they on it, I don't know if you noticed, they rain down some lovely.
Those are connected to.
What's that?
Is that those are the trees that they are specifically attracted to and.
Do they take off afterwards?
Sure.
I think what happens is, is the, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, the way they explained it, if you kill the tree and you kill the eggs, that's, that's the, the tree and then what, they eventually start to die off because they don't have anything to feed on anymore.
So those, those trees are humongous and they're expensive to take down because they are so tall, um, do we know if there's any, um, and, and times are kind of hard right now, if there's any, um, I don't wanna say a refund, but any sort of an incentive that we know of through?
No.
The state? The state of sound?
They, they are struggling with getting, with doing, you know, spreading themselves through the nine counties that are quarantined. Um, and it just continues to spread, so no, unfortunately, there's not.
We're on our own, okay.
Their eggs um, apparently look sort of like a lichen on a tree, so if you look it up and can kind of determine what that looks like and you happen to see that, um, you're supposed to scrape them off of it and put it in something like an alcohol.
Into a plastic bag with alcohol in it, kills it instantly.
And there you go, and there you, do your part.
Oh, trust me, I have my kids and my husband out there, it's a fun game, smash the lanternfly.
Oh, and give them three jumps, because after the third jump, they stop.
Yeah.
I don't know, they're getting nastier these days.
They're, they're very, very perky, they get around.
They were all over Round Valley Reservoir in, on the water. So as we were on the water, they, like literally you go through swarms of them that are just kind of sitting on top of the water.
My husband said he was riding his road bike through Round, Round Valley around and was literally trying to just run them over on the road, because on the shoulder of the road, they were, it was just everywhere.
They're all over the sidewalk up here, you're just walking on them at this point.
They're crunching?
Yeah. They're everywhere.
Game for the kids, crunch the lanternflies.
They're in my giant tree, so.
Okay, well, we will uh, be working over the next week or so with the commission and trying to compile that list and see what we can do and move forward from there.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
All right, Riley?
Caught me off guard, I don't know why, um, okay, so, something a little less gross. Oh, well, depends on how you look at it, let's talk about weeds. Um, so I just wanted to raise the issue, cause it's come up again and again and again, we've talked about it sort of ad nauseam among council and it's come up from some residents and it's come up just sort of walking around and I think because so many people are home right now and times are hard and things are, you know, just a little more challenging, everyone is seeing that Main Street has a lot more weeds on it. I brought this up at the last meeting, probably the meeting before, um, I actually just keep bringing it up, um. I, I know it's a frustrating thing to see and a lot of the buildings in town are owned by out-of-town owners and they have tenants in them. And um, as all of you know, the uh, side, well, all of the council members on, I don't know if everyone on the, the call knows, but I think a lot of you do, the sidewalks in town are owned um, by the property owners who match along the sidewalks, so we have a, a maintenance ordinance in town, um, and thankfully Tara's on the call and she can speak to this. But the uh, ordinance requires the owner of the property to maintain the sidewalk. So I just want to reiterate that for everyone in town to please maintain your sidewalks, please weed your sidewalks, please clear them, please keep them clean. If you are a owner of a property on Main Street, please weed your sidewalk, please make sure it looks nice. This is a hard enough time for every business owner in our community and if you're not keeping your property clean, um, you're hurting the business next to you, not only are you hurting yourself, but you're, you're hurting the whole town. And so that is um, obviously frustrating for the people who are doing what they need to do to maintain their own properties. Um, and if you're struggling, if you're having trouble, please reach out to us, you know, maybe we can help you, maybe we can get you a volunteer, maybe we can do something for you, but if you're not communicating with us, we don't know what's going on with you. So that's my soapbox pep talk today about weeds. Um, for anyone who's concerned that we're not doing anything about it, please know that if it's gone on long enough, notices of violation have been sent, we are following our ordinances, Rich can speak to that, I'll give him a second when I'm done on my soapbox and let him speak to how that works. Um, but there are rules in place about how this all goes down, um, we try to give people time to correct what's going on. We know everyone is struggling right now and we've tried to be a little more lenient for that reason. However, if things have gotten very bad, we've sent notices of violation and then I, I'm gonna let Rich speak to that process so that he can explain it to anyone who's interested.
I typically, um, when we reach out to a property owner, we do it kind of on an informal basis first to see uh, if we can get them to address the issue, uh, if they're unresponsive, uh, or, or if they're ignore us or don't uh, wanna work with us, then we issue a notice of violation and at that point they have ten days to correct um, before summons would be issued. Um, thankfully, knock on wood, um, the people who have received the no- uh, notice of violations have started to correct um, the weed issues, um, but unfortunately, the, the problem that we get is people don't always like the process, so someone calls us today to say, uh, a weed issue on sidewalk, it might take two weeks based on the timeline that we have to give a property owner to correct before action is even noticed. So a lot of times people think, cause nothing is visually being corrected, nothing's being done. That's not always the case, so what I've been encouraging residents to do is to call me, because we maintain a list of who we uh, have issued NOBs to, I mean, we don't release personal information, of course, but a lot of times they'll say, yes, we're aware of that property, they are taking corrective action type of thing. Unfortunately, it's longer and it's, it's never as quick as people like it.
Right, so like anything in municipal government, there is a process, there is a procedure that we have to follow. Um, and there's laws and regulations in place and when it's not happening to you, that can be very frustrating, but if it is happening to you, I suspect you'd be very happy that there is a process and a procedure in place. So please just know that we are aware and we are working on it and um, we all have the best interest of town at heart. The other thing I have done is um, asked Rich to, much to his dismay, put together a memo uh, detailing in general terms, how much square footage of sidewalk we have in town and what the outline of costs it would be to maintain that sidewalk, so that we can understand as a community, if we did take on the sidewalks, which we're not suggesting we're going to, but if we did, what would it cost the town? So that when someone suggests that we should as a community be undertaking the weeding of all the sidewalks, the snow plowing of all the sidewalks, the salting of all the sidewalks and the maintenance and repair of all the sidewalks, we can talk about what that actually costs. Um, just the maintenance alone, generally speaking, we replace and repair about five percent of sidewalks per year and would be, need to be replaced, and so ballpark figures, that's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So just to understand what we're talking about in terms of how that affects the budget, we are working with about a four million dollar budget in this town. So I just want to put these numbers out there for people to understand, this is a lot of money for this community and um, it's something we take very seriously and it's something we think about all the time and, and you know, obviously, I'm a huge proponent of sidewalks, something I've been yelling about for years. Um, and we need more of them and they need to be better and, and more compliant. But it's, you know, we are maintaining them, we are working on them and um, I want people to understand what we're actually talking about. It's, um, we can't just maintain one sidewalk and not another sidewalk. It's all or nothing on, on the sidewalk front, so Tara, I don't know if you can speak a little bit to how the ordinance works? Um, I'm, I know I'm springing it on you, so if you're not prepared for that, that's okay, um.
I think Rich gave a pretty uh, good overview of the process, but yes, the, the sidewalks are owned um, somewhat by the, the abutting property owners and that includes in the downtown area, the ordinance provides that abutting property owners to the sidewalk are responsible for the care and maintenance of that sidewalk, that includes, that includes weeding, snow removal, um, and things like that. So I think Rich gave a good overview of the process and how it goes and just like any other property maintenance standard, the, the standards for the sidewalks are enforced by, by the town.
Right, so the point of all of this is to say, if we start weeding the sidewalks on Main Street, then we have to weed everyone's sidewalks and that costs a significant amount of money and time for the town. Um, and that is why we don't send out our DPW guys to weed the sidewalks in town. Um, so it's not that we're not aware or we don't care, there are actual budgetary restrictions on us. Um, so I wanted to address that for the community so that you know that we are thinking about this um, and we're not just ad hoc ignoring um, the issue. So that is sidewalks, does anyone have questions on that and I'm happy to share Rich's memo uh, with the council? I, I found it very informative and useful, um, if people are interested, I can circulate that um, to all of you. No, okay, so that's my sidewalk, my sidewalk conversation, so the guild met, um, they are pushing back Teacher Appreciation Week to next week, um, thinking that this uh, the first week back to CPS would be a little chaotic for everyone, so it starts the week of September twenty-first, which, I'm sorry, that's two weeks, um, so that will be great, anyone who is a teacher and has credentials can go into town. All of the um, all of the um, anyone can, all of the shops are participating, you can go in and get a discount um, if you spend over twenty dollars, I believe it is, so that's great. Movie night uh, will be September twenty-sixth, all of the proceeds from that will go to benefit the Guild Foundation and that is going to be small grants to our businesses here in the community, also wonderful. They are moving forward with Pumpkin Fest, so Chief, look out for a, um, they're gonna submit their paperwork to you, I think in the very near future, they're looking to close the road, so um, you should be getting that soon, and I've paused on it a million times, so I'm sure it'll be fine. Um, and then I'm very excited, Mike and I are working, I'm gonna move into my economic development report, bridging over from the Guild, Mike and I are working on more um, videos for our downtown businesses. Sorry, I'm losing my voice, um, so that was very successful with some of our Guild uh, members and we'll be doing some more with some of our restaurants and other businesses. I did get some feedback that somebody from the community saw the Baylick of Clinton one, um, saw that the, the woman who owns that business hand paints all those beautiful glass.
Yeah, Wendy.
Yeah, she, she hand paints all those, I had no idea, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Um, so somebody saw the video that Mike beautifully produced and we, we did together and um, somebody saw it online and drove down to her store, cause she knew that they hand painted them and bought a bunch and was like.
Yeah, my nee- it was my neighbor and she was like, it was, they're beautiful, and so she's now been going down and getting them and giving them as gifts.
Yeah.
I think it's, it was, I think the videos are such a great way to, you know, push out what our merchants have, cause sometimes you just don't know.
Exactly, so that was very successful and Mike, there was another, we got another good feedback, I think, from the Town Diner about somebody coming all the way to Clinton because they saw one of the videos um, that we had done, so we'll be doing some more of those and hopefully building up a good uh, repertoire of videos about our local merchants, um, that we can then push back out to the community and get more, you know, more people into our local business area, um, because obviously it builds on itself, the more people we get in, the better. Um, and the more of them that do it, the better for all of them, so it builds on itself. Um, so that's the Economic Development Committee met last night and that is part of that, we're also working on building. We're also working on building a coalition around safe walking and, and sidewalk advocacy. So, I won't go too much more into my sidewalk spiel, but I will be meeting with Go100In and Tara from Go100In and Sue Haas from Basil Bandwagon to talk about Old 22, which I know, I don't know if Rojas went on my, my, my screen here, she's here somewhere. I'm sure you're rolling your eyes at the idea of DOT again. But Sue was concerned about the safety along Basil Bandwagon, which of course she is. And then with the AMP coming in, that sort of mid-block area, you know, with the sidewalk on one side and no sidewalk on the other, you know. Cory, I don't know how you feel about this, but it was raised to me, the idea that people are going to be just even more sprinting across the street there. And then, you know, what is that going to start looking like? People running from the new AMP development over to Basil Bandwagon in the middle of Old 22 with no, like, I don't know.
It's been happening for, for years, it's just going to get worse, you're right.
Yeah, so, we're going to talk to Tara at Go100In, just start, you know, building a coalition around the concept. I, you know, we all know where DOT stands, so at least start the conversation and build at least, you know, a broader coalition around the idea and see where we can go. So, that is economic development. And I'll, I'll let you know, Cory, if Tara has any new ideas, you can never know what will come out of it. And I think that's it, and then CL, we had talked about the voting, so I'm glad that's, that's going out. I think the only other thought I had was if we can put something up on the municipal building for people who come, so they don't try to come in the building, because obviously we're still keeping the building still closed. So, maybe we put up a paper ballot for people to see. I'm getting, so I know all of us on council are getting questions about how to do it.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that, that's very helpful.
Yep.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Sure thing, Sherry.
Yes, Mayor, let's see. First of all, I just want to say, the videos that Riley is speaking of are really beautifully done. It was a wonderful idea, and I think we should note that Mike spends probably two to three hours editing and producing each one. Like, it might be 30 minutes of recording time in the, in the shop, but he spends a lot of time behind the scenes making them look so nice. So, I just want to say, thank you, Mike, that's really a lot of work. And I hope the business owners appreciate the, the quality that they're getting in these videos. They're really nicely done, and I would hope that all of them are sharing them on social media and, you know, their own channels, websites, whatever, please feel free to share them at will. Let's see, Roads Committee will meet in October, October 2nd, and we will discuss the stormwater ordinance and hopefully have something to produce or present to council in the month of October. Land Use Board met September 1st. We got through part of the Shell Dunkin' Donuts drive-through application, 82 West Main. We heard from their engineer and their planner. We started to hear testimony about, from the traffic engineer, but we didn't get to board questions or public questions, we ran out of time. So, that meeting is carrying over to September 15th, and we will hear from the rest of their experts.
Sherry, talking about traffic engineer, do we have a traffic study on that up here in the Knowles? There are a lot of residents have, have been asking me concerning traffic study around that drive-in.
Yes, they did do a traffic study and found that most of the traffic in that areas in the evenings, it's not morning traffic. So, I'm not sure how that's going to impact the Dunkin' Donuts, which tends to be, you know, your morning Dunkin' coffee donut fix.
Is there a way, is there a way to share, share that with the public? Is it on our website?
On the website already.
It's on the, the September. We're the last Land Use Board.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I can tell residents where to find it.
Thank you. All, all the documents from the, the board meeting are up there. Other than anything that is attorney-client privilege, everything else is up there for residents to look at.
Yes, so we, we will have time for questions on the 15th. So, you know, the message to the public is if you have issues, concerns, questions, please dial into the September 15th meeting if you can, and we'll answer those questions live on Zoom. So, on the 15th, we're also going to hear completeness hearing for the AMP development, redevelopment property. If their application is deemed complete, they will be on the agenda for October 6th. And we're already, we've got three meetings slotted for October, so the 6th, the 13th, and the 20th at 7:00 PM, because we're expecting, you know, a lot of discussion and public input and questions for the AMP redevelopment. So, put that on your radars too, if you're listening from the public and again, you want to provide input, ask questions. Please feel free to attend those meetings and give us your valuable input. And that's all I got, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Uh, first I'll just mention that we'll take the, we'll take the videos for the, you know, the voting from the county clerk. We'll anchor that on our Facebook page in the next door, and also put it on our, our homepage as well as, you know, a guide for that. That way, we can always redirect people directly to our, our homepage and they can watch it. I don't know if we want to do something as a banner for it. We've had the COVID banner up there for so long, maybe it's a good idea we could change the banner for a little while.
Election, election Q and A, or FAQs.
Yeah, Fire Department is meeting tonight. They did not want to meet on Labor Day weekend, I'm not really sure why. No, kidding. And I just let you know that we've really delayed the continuance of the seniors committee until COVID is, is in check, at least to some degree. A lot of the people who wanted to attend are not on Zoom, and they were doing it as also a social activity. So, it, it's not that we're not, we don't want to do it, it's that we can't. And I don't see us being able to do anything until 2021 unless an absolutely brilliant idea comes from somebody. Anyway, that's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you, and Megan.
But not least, I, the school board meets on 9/22. I just want to kind of, I know it's been a difficult time transition from teachers, the administration, and for the parents and students of CPS. I think we all need to give each other some grace. It's been difficult for everybody to transition, it's only day two. There's been some hiccups, there's been some really good stories and some positivity, but I think we need to come together as a community, like I said, give each other grace because we're all trying to figure out what this new school year looks like. And I think the most that we can do is support each other and support the staff and the administration because we're going to work it out, and it's going to be okay. I've worked, you know, we've worked closely, we, a lot of the council has attended the last Board of Ed meetings. We got a lot of good information, and there's going to be tweaks in the first couple of days, especially the first week, and, you know, if, if there's some struggles, feel free to reach out. And I think the best we can do is support each other through the transition because I know Dr. Cohen has really put the really best effort in to make this a safe and successful school year, and his staff are working tremendous, you know, tremendously hard.
I got a call from the vice principal last.
Yeah, so I think.
Eight o'clock at night, so they were working hard.
Yeah, I think there, there's a lot of tweaks that have to happen. There are so many moving parts and so many kids in different situations. So, I just want, you know, the Board of Ed and CPS to know that, you know, we support you in your efforts because, you know, they started planning in April. They thought this was going to happen, and that's the reason why our school is one of the schools that's able to offer hybrid because they started planning way far in advance. So, if you're still having issues and concerns about connectivity and, you know, trying to reach teachers and stuff, you know, I'll be more than happy to, you know, field some questions for you and reach out to, you know, CPS for you, or, you know, the teachers have been really open and willing, like at least, you know, Councilwoman Intertol just said, you know, the vice principal reached out to her because there was some getting onto multiple platforms and everything. So, that's my school board kind of soapbox and CPS. So, I think we are, I think many of us have chose this community because of the school that, that we have, so. We talked about the community center. With the playground project, myself, I have reached out to resident Ken Fisher, and we will be co-directing this project together. Ken has a years and years experience of building playgrounds. He did the Field of Dreams up in Annandale as well as the Turf Fields over at North. So, we have started having very long conversations of how to start moving this forward, and I'm very excited to, to be working with Ken. And I think his experience is going to be such a wealth for our town and moving this project forward. So, I'm super excited about that. As for recreation, Riley stated about the drive-in movie night. Just to be aware, if you need to get your tickets, you need to get them ASAP because more than half have already been sold. So, again, just to remind you, the movie is The Goonies, and it's going to be a really cool night. Recreation, all their events, they really pull off very nicely. And then the fireworks were just this past weekend. I want to thank Jeff Haddon and the Fire Department and Bucky and the First Aid Squad, Jack Daniels. We put this together very quickly and were able to get it off without a hitch. Mayor Kovach livestreamed it with music, so that was nice, and I thought it was just a really nice event. There was a lot of nice feedback on Facebook, so I'm so happy that we will be able to bring an event to the community for something that was nostalgic as well as, as well as, you know, ending the summer nicely, and to the chief also for your, your help. I know there was some, there was a, there was things happening at the same time as we were ready to start the event. So, I appreciate you, your support through that as well. So, on that note, I think that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve standby in overtime?
Says Lisa, so moved.
Sherry, second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Caneen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. I?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Korsch?
Yes.
Mr. Trappaggin?
Yes.
Mayor Kovach?
Yes. And you can have a motion to pay the bills.
Motion, Mike.
Megan, second.
Roll call.
Ms. Caneen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. I?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Korsch?
Yes.
Mr. Trappaggin?
Yes.
Mayor Kovach?
Yes. Great, does anyone have anything that we've not yet discussed? No, then I, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone. Thanks.